I'd like to call the meeting to order. As usual, we will start with public comment. If anybody has something they would like to say, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. You've come to the podium and you have three minutes to state your case. Yes, sir?
Okay, I'll get my two senses in.
State your name and address when you get there.
Hi, okay. David Jernigan, and I live on Three Clay Lane in Lee, New Hampshire. I was coming because of, we had that discussion last week. They're going to be taking sand off of Three Clay Lane up there. That's where I live, that's where my house is. I'll make it short. I was wondering if I could get a public hearing on this? Is that possible?
Sorry, get a --
Public hearing. I was wondering if I can get that, first of all, public hearing.
I'm actually going to talk about all of that later in the meeting.
Okay.
First, and second of all, my second question, I'm going to make this short because I don't want to waste you guys' time and get a lot of people. When the people, the people that come in to do the work to take the sand and stuff like that, is it possible that, they said they were going to do it over time? Is it possible that they could kind of, if they're going to do that, if it's decided to do that, can they do that maybe all at once? Is that possible? Or not?
You're saying take all of the material like --
Get it all, like, not over so many 20 years or whatever their proposal? I don't know. I mean, I just, 20 years is a long time.
It is. I can't answer the question, obviously, right now, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, that's all I was just, those are my main questions.
But later on, I guess we have, we're going to talk about that subject. So if you'd like to stick around and see what else, what else is going to come up, you're welcome to do that.
Okay, yeah.
All right? Yeah, relax.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief Fransfeld.
Good evening. So I am here about the security camera system for the transfer station. We've got three quotes. I met with each of the vendors, so we're comparing apples to apples. Pretty much what we're looking at is replacing the outdated or not functioning cameras that are there now and adding a couple in some of the areas that have been problematic. The back of the transfer station, where it's secluded, where we've had air conditioners dumped off illegally, things of that nature, and over by the swap shop now. So we can monitor that, especially where people are going to be parking across, we're going to have the crosswalk, I think we should have a camera there, keeping an eye on that for safety. And then Toby had mentioned, when I was walking around with him, that there have been some issues when you're driving into the transfer station, you have the big overhead door in the front, people just wandering in on the work floor where the bailers are and the block cats are running. So my suggestion would be to have a large sign that says authorized personnel only, something like that, but a camera back here so that it's on that sign, so if somebody does ignore the sign and walks in and gets hurt, it's on camera. Well, you walked right by the sign and said you're not supposed to be here. A lot of this is liability for the town. People putting their children up on the wall. You know, you have a sign that says nobody on the wall, and it's on, and camera, and somebody puts their child, and then God forbid that child falls, you say, hey, they were warned not to do that. And then on the outside of the two bays, of the two entrances, there, people will park there and bring their trash to the man door. There aren't any cameras there either. And so one, there would be one on that corner. That was pretty much it. The quotes that you'll see were all just about the same.
Yeah.
Eastern Alarm, who did the system here, been tremendous to work with, very helpful. Any issues we've had, they take care of right away. So I'm recommending that we go with their quote.
Well, they're all within $1,000 or whatever.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I said, it's all apples to apples. You look at the equipment, the placement.
I was personally surprised, as a matter of fact, that Julie and I had the conversation about the number of cameras that they wanted to put up. But all of them, after looking at all three quotes, we're talking about 16 or 17 cameras, so.
To get the proper coverage.
To get the coverage for the entire building.
Big building, a lot of areas.
Got a couple of questions. Where's the main computer that can view all these?
It's in the main office, Toby's office.
The main Toby's office. Is there possibilities of porting that to other?
Yeah, I talked to Eastern Alarm, well, possibly us being able to wirelessly remote it and things like that, so that could always be done.
So you could also see it as well, so obviously. Is there a requirement? I know at the university, we have to post that we're video surveilling people. Have to have a sign that says this place is being video recorded.
Yeah, and we have them here.
So we need to have those signs put up there too?
Yeah. It's not so much where it's, it's a public place and it's video only. If you had audio as well, would be an issue, but it doesn't hurt to have it.
You might push away some people and say, well, I see a sign that's being recorded instead of walking in then seeing a camera or something.
Right. Well, yeah, it actually would, and I mean, it's an inexpensive thing to do.
Yes, absolutely.
You would only need them, you know, where they drive in. One in the swap shop, so people might be putting something out, ooh. Yeah, good deterrent.
Is there any consideration of putting one by the gate? The reason why I ask it, you know, in the early morning, people sometimes, I don't think they ever just dump things because they're impatient or anything.
Let me, I can check with John because they, we could put one, one of the ones that's on the front that has zoom capability.
Okay.
I can check with him on that.
I'm just wondering, because, you know, the gates close sometimes, some come down.
Yeah, and they dump it right there.
They dump it right there or just be evil and do side work at that point.
Yeah, no, I can definitely ask John about that.
Okay. I think it's good.
Yeah.
I'm happy.
Resolution, so you can zoom in on a number of bites so you can see who the people?
Well, we won't have to because the placement of the ones in the, inside the bays, the resolution is good enough that we will see the plate and won't have to zoom in.
Okay.
Because we talked about those, when you get the ones that start zooming in, you start talking about a little bit more money.
Okay.
So we didn't want to do all of them if we didn't need to, so that's why we spent a lot of time on placement. And he felt confident that the placement of the ones inside the bay, because in New York City, you're supposed to have a front plate too, so we'll get them either way, driving in or leaving.
So what if they don't go into the two bays? Let's say I'm Mr., I don't want to pay your fees, so I'm going to drive around the outside, drop off my air conditioner and take off.
Yeah, so we will have you, if you skirt the bays, there's going to be one on the top corner, so if you're facing the bays, there'll be one on the top corner facing towards the back of the transfer station.
So you'll get our back, okay.
As you come around the back, there's going to be one in the back corner. As you drive further down, where they have the maintenance building, there are two facing this way. So it'll cover the whole panoramic of the whole back area. Then as you come around the corner, across where the old swap shop used to be, and there's a porta potty there, there's one on that building that, because you can actually hide off to the right where the swap shop used to be, there's one facing there as well. So you can't go anywhere in a vehicle without being on camera. Pretty much in person, it'd be difficult with this going to be placement.
So it'll provide you what you need if you need to go after somebody?
Exactly.
Dumping or whatever?
Yeah.
Storage, how long will it, how long will store the videos? So how long?
Well, it will store, you can store them as long as you want.
Yeah.
It just becomes a storage issue after a while. What we do here is 30 days.
Okay.
Well, we, for us, we break it into different categories. Arrests are 90 days, an incident would be 30 days, you know, traffic warning issued might be 10 days. But just to give you a heads up, we just realized going through our body camera system, we actually had 2,000 videos stored.
Really?
Because the deletion mode hadn't been set up.
Hmm.
So once we did that, it started, but we had 2,000 videos and we still had plenty of storage. Gigabyte or tritobite, whatever they call it.
Terabyte.
Terabyte, there you go, terabyte.
So it's the same system that you have, so this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
Is there a maintenance requirement, a maintenance contract or anything?
No, no. And we had an issue with our DVR, which was primarily a lightning strike, which has always been our problems here. But they came out and they gave us a DVR to use. The manufacturer of the DVR refused to do anything about it. They actually went to bat and fought with the company for us and got the DVR replaced for us at no cost, so.
I didn't read all of the detail of the quotes. Is there a warranty period on it?
There is. I'm not sure exactly what his warranty was. Each, the DVR has a certain warranty, the cameras have a certain warranty.
Okay.
But that hasn't been an issue for us.
There's a one-year warranty.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Do we agree with Eastern Alarms being the vendor?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Motion to approve recommendation to grant the town administrator authority to enter into a contract with Eastern Alarms Incorporated to install a security camera system at the transfer station for an amount not to exceed $16,417 and to utilize funds from the transfer station capital reserve fund for this purchase. Someone second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For Pat.
Thank you. I will talk about the front gate.
Okay.
And he, John, sent it from the time I notified him tomorrow, about three weeks to get all the parts in, and he'll drive the work on it.
Thank you very much, chief.
Is there any other agenda that you might need me for?
Thank you. Any questions? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
All right, have a good night.
Can we know what it is?
Yes.
Item four, town administrator, Julie Glover.
So the board would like, we can talk about the gravel pit, it's a gentleman's stage for the discussion. So as you may recall, the select board gave approval to the highway supervisor to move ahead with the plans for the town-owned, we'll call it a gravel pit, excavation gravel pit off of Clay Lane. So I've been working with Mr. Bullock and Ms. Rossi on what the next steps are. So although the town is exempt from some of the provisions of RSA 155E, we are actually not exempt from most of them. So we will need to get an alteration of terrain permit, which will involve engineering. Ms. Rossi thinks that it's a good idea for us to get an appraiser on board, find out just what the value of the land is, what the impact, if any, might be on the neighbors. We have to have a reclamation plan, which means we need to hire an engineer. And I believe that we do have to have, we do have to go before the planning board and have a public hearing. I don't think we're exempt from that regulation. So again, we're just working on what all the next steps are. Our attorney does not think that we have to get zoning variance, so we're proceeding by looking into all of this, and then we'll just report back to the board once we know what the costs are, you know, so that we have a better idea of what that's going to be. I have asked the trustees of trust at their next meeting to discuss whether any of the funds, so for example, the cost of the alteration of terrain permit or maybe any of the engineering can come out of the highway and bridge capital reserve fund.
Oh.
It's, you know, it's worth asking. The original warrant article, I believe, talked about the funds, among other things, being used for maintenance, maintaining town roads. So if one believes that snow operations are part of maintaining town roads, so that's where we are right now. We'll obviously keep you, keep everybody apprised as we move through the process. It's not going to happen overnight, obviously, because a lot has to happen between now and when we might actually be digging in that.
And Julie, all of those meetings will be posted on the website? Is that right?
You mean if there's a planning board meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
With the subject matter or, so all I'm trying to do is?
Well, they're not posted with the subject. Well, actually, if there's a public hearing, there might be.
It's posted with what's going on.
So I would just recommend that you periodically look at the website, the town of Lee website.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Keep track of any meetings that might be coming up on this subject.
Okay.
Well, it, I believe that if there's going to be a hearing in front of the planning board, they'll send out a butter notice.
Yeah, you would be advised if there's going to be a, a meeting on.
So I have to check the website, you said, right? For all of that?
Well, I'm just advising you to, that the info, a lot of the information could be posted on there. You can look at what the planning, when the planning board meeting is, so on and so forth. You can call.
Oh, okay.
I mean.
Yeah, that sounds good.
But it's not anything that's going to happen, apparently, within a week or two, you know? There's going to be a lot of activity on it.
Okay. That's fine. Yeah. That's fine. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to, I use my time already, so I can't.
Oh, you're all right. You're all right. You're all right.
I don't want to, yeah, crunch into that, but yeah. Now, I just want things to work out for everybody, that's all.
Understand.
I'm not about, I'm not about cosmic problems for anybody.
We want, we want the same thing.
You know, we want everybody to be happy and content, that's all.
All right, there.
All right, thank you for your time this evening, you are. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Have a good one. You'll be long.
Just wanted to fill in a few blanks for the benefit of the board on this matter of Clay Lane excavation. At our conservation commission meeting last Monday night, Mr. Jernigan and several other people attended, one thing that came to my attention is although there are only two abutters with residences who are directly affected, there is a trail through the property that apparently is used by many individuals in the neighborhood. And presumably, a public hearing notice would only go to abutters. So I want to make sure that we have some way of notifying other interested parties. Another thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that the conservation commission has offered to meet with the immediate abutters or anyone else who wishes to come along to do a site walk, because Steve Bullock made it clear that he would not be excavating the totality of the property over the 20 years, that there is a significant portion that would not be useful material, and therefore there would be a wooded buffer that would protect the residences on Clay Lane. At the request of, I believe, Mr. Jernigan, the site walk has been put off until sometime in the spring when snow is gone and we can easily have people come out there and get a good feel for what's being proposed. So those are just a couple of things that I wanted to make you aware of.
Okay.
If you have questions for me, I'd be glad to take them.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
The statute requires that we keep a minimum 50-foot buffer. It's not to say we can't keep more, but that's what we're required to do.
Okay. Uh, let's see, where are we?
Moving on.
Four A.
Four A.
Moving on. A.
As we have for the past number of years, the Health Trust provides us with $500 for the year to be used on a variety of healthy eating, healthy living type activities, which is all spearheading by the town secretary. So this is asking the board to accept the $500 and to request approval to use it on healthy, healthy stuff for the town employees.
And how have we, how have we done that in the past?
Um, we had a program where there were a number of things that you'd get points for, and so they added up, and the person that had the most points won a gift card. We've done healthy eating lunches in the past where we invite all of the town employees to join us, which have been the most received. Right, which is the one that, you know this, when you provide food, people?
Everybody comes, right?
Participate.
Come, yeah, that's good. Even if it is just lettuce and tomato.
Right, right. And they like the healthy food, they like the healthy food.
Yeah. That's me. In the gander.
Should I stick it in?
La 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 la. In the mountain.
There you go.
We didn't stand up and salute. Okay. Any questions, any comments, any discussion?
Good use of the funds.
Move to accept $500 received from the Health Trust for the wellness program funds to be spent on campaigns within the wellness program and grant Lee Town employees permission to participate in campaigns within the Health Trust Wellness Program as presented by the Wellness Coordinator throughout the 2019 calendar year. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Just wanted to have a brief discussion with the select board about the part-time transfer station wages. There may have been some discussions recently because there's been a slot open. As it so happens, there's a gentleman who's applied for the position, and Toby's interviewed him, and the gentleman is interested in taking the position at the current wages.
At the current wage?
The current wage. In addition, because there's an entire class of employees, solid, part-time solid waste operators, I think that if we raised the rate for one, we'd have to raise the rate for all of them, so that's what that spreadsheet that I included in the agenda is showing. We may have some problems with the budget if we were to raise everybody's rate. So honestly, it'd be my recommendation, Mr. Van Aken agrees with me, to just keep the rate at the 1561 for now.
Okay.
I believe the conversation was that we're having a hard time finding somebody. We offer a little.
It was the conversation, but.
Right, I.
Apparently, the guy is.
I only know what my conversations with him have been since then.
Right. So, he's okay in terms of his hourly rate for this fiscal year?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, as long as he doesn't go over the average number of hours.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Voter's Guide, it's that time of year again, when you put together the voter's guide. It was in the agenda packet. This year, the voter's guide is more pages than it's been in the past because we're inserting the two-page TCBC flyer for the town center project. Oh, it did front back, front back. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, this should be a.
It'll, we'll have to work that out.
No, I, well.
Have to move it? Yeah, we'll have to figure out how we can, where we can put it. It may not be in the order of the warrant articles if you want it to be its own piece of paper.
Yeah, I don't think it should.
Well, just the whole idea was it's front back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe, I don't know, maybe you can attach it to the back?
I was going to put it in the back and put it in the middle of the warrant, it just doesn't sit right.
And maybe in the description, you can say, in article number three, see more detail, back page or something like that?
Yeah, I would go for that too.
And you have the updated version, yeah.
Yeah. And you know it's going to be sideways to the way that the, okay, all right. So because we're inserting two full color pages, the cost is going to be higher than it's been in the past year, so we're probably going to go over budget in that budget line.
Can you, I get the postage, the 315.
Yeah, 315, yeah.
And what last year's was, but can you walk us through these two estimate quotes, which I seem to have gotten, but?
Well, you must have done something with them because now your name is on it.
They can change.
I asked.
And they won't?
And they, they didn't. I don't know why it won't, but they didn't.
All right. When I first saw that, I'm thinking, did I forget that I've got a quote from these people about this? But they're the ones that printed the poster, the postcard.
I just printed what you said. I know, but these aren't the new ones. So these aren't quite the estimate.
Oh, but can you go through the, because there are two different ones. One says voter guide color pages.
Right.
The other one says voter guide color pages, three clicks slash set.
Right. So one is printing the flyer in black and white, and one is printing the flyer in color. That's, that's the difference. So printing the flyer in black and white is the $1,883.
Okay.
And printing the flyer in full color is $2,438.
Okay. That's as it is?
Yes.
All right.
And I'm assuming, well, should assume, but I'm assuming you want to go ahead and do it in the full color?
I would suggest yes, that's how it was designed. So that's like an increase of like $900, something like that?
Hmm.
A little bit?
No, not quite.
Not that much.
Six, six hundred?
I mean, because you gave us the numbers from last year, last year was 15.
Oh, well, yeah.
So part of the increase is because of the extra, oh, okay.
Well, part of it is overall, there's more pages overall.
Okay.
Even without the brochure. Postage has gone up.
Okay.
So.
So really, the difference is the 49325 versus the 123376?
Correct.
So that's.
But then you, well, you have to look at it as a total because you can't ignore the number up above.
Oh.
Right.
Okay.
So that, the totals are down below.
Okay.
The 2438 versus 1883.
So $550.
Yeah.
Okay.
So did anybody have any?
I have a comment too. I've got a kind of a question for understanding.
Mm-hmm.
I know where it's going, but maybe the public won't see it. On article three, you know, it says, where is it? Authorized the select board, so forth, including about living in two withdrawing $375,278 from Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund.
Yeah.
When you go down, it says the current balance of Capital Reserve Fund is 376,603.
Okay. Yeah.
The public will not understand. Why are you not taking it all?
Well, we don't necessarily know exactly. Because those are balances, John, as of.
I mean, the number's probably different today because of interest.
I understand that, but I'm just hoping the public won't have any questions on that. And then it shows up again, and I know, we discussed it last time, 129,722, but there's only 126,522.
No, that's in the library, the other library Capital Reserve Fund.
So I'm hoping, I'm just saying, I'm looking at it just quickly. I hope nobody gets mixed up when they're reading through it, that's all.
John, the 376,603, that's what you anticipate on July 1st, 2019?
The balance?
Yeah. Where's?
No, that's as of January 30th.
Oh, okay.
It says that somewhere in here.
Where?
Page three.
Page three.
January 28.
The numbers that are in the warrant article are what's expected to be there on the first day of the coming fiscal year after what's expected to be spent from those funds is taken out, but adding in the interest that's expected to be earned.
Okay.
The 376,000 in the library building Capital Reserve Fund, I don't think that everything that's to be spent from that is, is taken out of that figure. In other words.
Right.
That fund is paying for some of the architect's fees, which haven't been paid yet, and whereas in the 375, the number that's in the warrant article, that is assuming that, that the architect bills us for everything that was in the contract, so that all gets taken out. And then the interest that's expected to be earned through the end of this fiscal year added in, and that's the 375. So you're right, it is, it does look.
It makes, so my recommendation is just take out that stuff, it just going to lead to confusion. Is there any reason? I mean, just leave it a rip off secret?
We put it in for all of them, but we can take it out for this warrant article.
It's just, it's a big warrant, article three, there's a lot of meat to it, and you read these numbers, you go down here, unless you just heard what John just said.
Correct. In fact, when I saw that, my first reaction was, oh, that looks like something's wrong.
Looks like a mistake, but it's not.
And then I figured out, and that's because I know the numbers.
But you and I and everybody here has been talking about it a long time, and this other's been talking about forever. The public's going to look at this quickly and who have not been on board, and it might lead to some confusion.
Instead of stating what's there now, it could. Instead of stating what's there now, it could be an explanation of why those particular numbers are in the warrant article, that those are what is expected to be there on the first day of the coming fiscal year with what's expected to be withdrawn and with the interest that's expected to be earned.
That feels even more confusing. And that's not necessarily true of the Town Hall Fund.
I just. You just dialogue it and take the numbers now, just, just take that paragraph out.
I, I agree.
Just leave it out.
So just take that out, but leave it in for all the other warrant articles?
Well, it's on Article Four, it just says a statement.
Well, Article Four doesn't have money attached to it. Well, I mean, it does, but there's nothing.
There's nothing, there's no fund.
Article Five doesn't have much in it.
Oh, it's an operating, but the rest of them, you know, it says what the current balance is.
I mean, we've been doing that for the past few years, I think it was at the request of the Select Board.
Yeah, it is, aggressively to have some kind of statement, I just feel on this particular one, this particular bond issue, and it's a little confusing. The rest of them are very straightforward, it's very understanding.
Then, the Town Administrator, if she wanted to keep that in, maybe there could be some added words about, something about, but some of this is uncovered because it's already, I mean, that's, that's why.
Yeah, now.
Well, if, if you, if you wanna have it for Article.
Well, no, we just simply, what I mean is that for the money warrant articles, I just put in what the current balance as of a certain date is.
Which I think is, but.
But if you want.
I just feel uncomfortable.
If you want, if you want me to take it out for this one, I'll take that one.
Just that one, yes.
Because even if, even if you got the number right for the Lee Building Capital Reserve Fund, you're not draining completely, and even so, even if you do, the fund is still there.
Yeah.
You have a warrant article to actually close it.
That's correct.
You can clean that up afterwards.
Okay, so we're taking the current balances out from warrant Article Three?
Just three.
Okay.
Guys, three for vote to pass that.
So then you can remove the, move it up, require three, just put it up there in the last line, just like you do all the rest of them, versus majority vote required. Don't leave a space there.
Well, I have to play with the spaces in order to make things.
A registration?
Right, right.
Okay, we'll give you that privilege then, okay?
Well, I'm gonna propose adding some space in Four, so the space you just lost in Three, I'm gonna steal back, I think. And the explanation in Four, can we add language that we were using in the presentation? Because it doesn't really tell too much about the Town Hall part. So we said, I have this, so you can take this, you already have that, but.
Okay, or you just read, oh, okay, go ahead.
So I think if we took some of this language specifically, you know, that we're putting aside two hundred thousand for the next two years in a separate fund dedicated in the sponsored project, using potentially matching funds from Mail Chip and Moose Plate, just to give them more information about what we're planning.
Can I have that at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, you already have it, but I printed one out for you, so.
Thank you.
But I think if we stuck that into the explanation, I think that would be helpful in terms of, because we're gonna give people that, one, didn't attend the presentations, they tend to attend the delivery session, so they're gonna go, well, what the heck is this? I have no idea what you're trying to do here. And I think that would give them a little bit more explanation of what we're trying to do, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Article Three, Article Five.
Article Five works.
Article, oh, that's the upper end budget, Article Six. I worked with the Fire Chief on the language for Article Six and Article Seven.
I didn't have anything until sixteen.
Okay. Do, do any of the other Selectmen have anything between this and sixteen? Okay.
I'll let you know.
Okay. Sixteen.
I think we're missing a word.
Oh, Parish House?
Parish House, the parish, I don't think the church will be happy if we removed it, so. And then after it says, but to be removed from the site by July two thousand nineteen, can we stick a sentence in there that says the Parish House doesn't interfere with any of the proposed Town Center project plans? Something to that effect? Because we've got some questions in terms of, well, you, you have to get rid of it because the Town Center's going in. Well, technically not. So just clarify, anybody that's, you know, hasn't even seen this, about what we're trying to do or what the article's trying to do.
Well, yeah, it's just what, the, the Town Center plan is not reliant on the Parish House.
No, vice versa.
Location.
Yeah. And I can give you what I'm suggesting, if you'd like. This is just like a delivery session, after provide the.
Okay. Warrant Article Seventeen.
I didn't have anything on that.
And warrant Article Eighteen.
No, that's on there.
And how did we all miss two thousand eighteen versus?
I don't know, I don't know. Do you know how many people I sent this to?
I know, and I looked at it.
Double and triple check, I don't know.
And I'm sitting there at the delivery session, and you know, you go ahead to the next round, we're just like, you kidding? What the heck is this, two thousand eighteen? It's one of those things, if you look at it too many times.
You stare right at it.
Yes.
Alright. So, we're all set?
We're all set for the warrant, okay?
Voter's Guide.
Yes.
We better do it tomorrow.
Voter's Guide.
Alright.
And when will this go out?
Uh, I'm gonna tell them, I'm gonna make the changes, send it to the printer tomorrow. I told them that I want it delivered to households, February twenty-sixth. We usually try to time it about two weeks before the, anything further out, and people forget they ever got it, too close, so.
And how many pages will it be?
Ten.
Ten pages.
Ten pages?
And what was it last year, eight, seven?
Six or seven. Seven.
It's alright.
It's those nuclear war people, with their wheres and.
Wheres, wheres, wheres.
Okay.
Miscellaneous?
Nope.
Nope.
Next item, the unanticipated funds from Primex for payment of invoices related to fire truck repairs. Fire truck was in a, actually a fairly minor accident on November twenty-seventh. So this is to reimburse the town for the cost to fix the fire truck, but of course, we're still obligated to the one thousand dollar deductible. Questions?
No questions.
No? So where does that come out of, the deductible? Is it out of the?
Comes out of the Fire Department.
Oh, comes out of the Fire.
Yeah, I mean, we, years ago, we had a budget line of about two thousand dollars for insurance deductibles. And then some board, I don't even remember how many years ago it was, twenty-four, twenty-five, cut it out of the budget. So I don't know whether we ever wanna think about bringing it back.
Well, I'm just thinking it'd be better if it came out of, like, our thing, out of the, directly out of the Fire Department. It's more of an insurance expense versus a.
We could take it out of contingency.
Contingency budget.
I just think it's a, I don't think that's fair to the department that had the accident, especially if it wasn't their fault.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you wanna vote to take it out of contingency, I'm sure the Fire Chief would be very happy.
Yeah, I just think it'd be more, because it's really the town's insurance.
Yep.
So.
That's not on the line.
You printed off the Thursday verse? Yeah.
I printed off the Thursday verse.
The one in the computers.
So I, I.
I don't, much is in the contingency, is there?
Oh, we don't spend.
We started with twenty thousand, we haven't spent much. Uh, we might not have spent anything.
I don't remember spending anything, you know?
Therefore, I move to take the money out of the contingency fund, the deduction, a thousand dollar deduction on the contingency for repair of the fire truck for the minor accident.
Second. And the check will go back into the general fund?
No, we actually, Joanne brings it in in a certain way that we, allows us to pay the.
Okay.
Bills with the actual check.
Oh, okay, she, oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, I've now communicated with Primex about what we have to do going forward to have them pay the vendors, so that's what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Not that we're gonna get into any more accidents.
Wow, okay. Light happens.
All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And squeeze that in there.
So that's this, yeah. The Chair didn't read this motion yet.
Which version do I, I don't know.
Well, there's, there's the thousand dollars that we just, you just decided to pay on contingency, but then there's.
Have to accept the money.
Accept the money and pay the money.
Okay, move to accept three thousand seven hundred and thirty-one point nine six received from Primex for damages incurred by the Fire Department's number three tanker. Authorize the payment of said funds towards three outstanding invoices for services rendered to fix that tanker. Now a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we are, pass.
Yeah, did someone second that?
This says Monday, and that's July day. And John and I both voted in affirmative. Mr. Brown did not vote.
Okay.
You made a noise, I could have been voting.
I don't think that was a noise.
It is Monday.
Yes, but we added that one line to after the Thursday.
Well, how would I know?
You look at the one that goes out on Friday.
Well, it doesn't say it's revised or anything, or you have to look at every, the whole entire agenda to see.
Well, only you three get the one on Thursday. Right, only the board and myself get the one that goes out on Thursday.
To see if there's any issues.
It would be confusing to the public certainly, and to us later on, if the one that went out on Friday always said revised. Can't do that. Yeah.
Because then they say, what do you revise?
Yeah.
Listen, don't send one until we get the latest press.
Well, you guys add things. Right, on Thursday, you can change things and add things for Friday.
Sometimes we wanna, not public, we want this or that.
If we wait till Friday, then it's already done out.
All I'm trying to say is I'm sitting on an agenda that is identical to yours, except that it doesn't have the same content.
Well, what are you doing with paper anyways?
Oh! I grabbed this when I got here, actually.
Oh, you, oh, okay. So you're using paper now?
No, I'm not, I got this, which is different.
And look at that, don't.
Okay.
Hold a little airplane, you just shoot.
We, we moving on to the consent agenda now?
Uh, yes, I have nothing further, thank you.
You're good tonight.
Yes? So, motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't wanna do it with a red pen, that would work.
Is that your correcting pen?
My correcting pen, yeah, always keeping red with me there.
Since we're signing things, any success with Rebecca?
Uh, we're gonna meet, it keeps getting postponed. It's now a week from tomorrow.
Have her bring you some of her cupcakes. She works at a bakery. Trying to get Rebecca Hudberg meeting on the trustee of trust.
Oh, that'd be really good.
She'd be good, man. Back to kitchen.
Thank you. Okay. We're gonna do it. I'm just saying that never makes sense.
Hello?
Except for the non-public.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That was two pages, wow.
Top block, huh?
See if it should be there.
Okay, motion entered in a non-public session per two Hampshire RSA ninety-one hyphen A colon three, two per N, I, roll call.
And A.
Quiet.
It's an A and an L.
It's an A and an L? Second, fine. Selectman Hugby?
Yes.
Selectman Corr.
Yes.
Selectman Brown?
Yes.
We need to seal the minutes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to seal a non-public session. Minutes. Second. Roll call, bug, Selectman Hugby?
Yes.
Selectman Corr.
Yes.
Selectman Brown?
Yes.
Any miscellaneous unfinished evidence?
Can I ask, and I don't know, maybe the committees already do this, can you find out at some point, or somebody can tell us, we did these lights, how much money are we saving? Can we tell from the bills how much it's?
Uh, I mean, I can start looking at the bills from when we.
I'd just like to be able to tell people, you should be spending all this money, how much are we saving? Because I've been asked that question in terms of, well, you put in all the lights, how much are you saving? And I said, I do not know, but I'll ask.
Do we get billed what, monthly or quarterly or? Monthly? So we should have maybe one, one valid bill that you could compare.
Okay.
Well, it's hard to tell, one valid bill.
Yeah, but they were working on a lot.
All I'm saying is, we didn't get to a full one hundred percent of the facility.
That's true.
Even if we can have a estimate in terms of.
Sure.
We're saving fifty dollars a month, or we saving five hundred dollars a month, but it's, you know, it'd be nice to say, and I don't think we need, you know, we're saving five hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-two cents a month, just something to the box.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Make a motion.
No. Go ahead, go ahead.
We have our training set up?
Yes.
Yeah.
For the, and you're okay with not being there?
Yeah, I've been trained to death, but sorry.
Can we ask the Town Secretary to provide food for that day?
That's a good idea, yes. Well, as long as it's not coming out of that health thing.
No.
No.
Although we could get the food.
I don't want a lettuce in. I was gonna say, as long as it's healthy stuff for the employees, healthy, healthy, no arrows, no gyros, healthy, healthy.
That was not my point, but, but if she can provide something for food and definitely some cookies or something for dessert.
Cookies, he wants cookies.
Well, she does a pretty good job with the cookies. So there's the, I'll, I'll invite the trainer to see if she can, she wants to stay with us, we can pick her brain during lunch, and then whatever the number minus John, he won't be there.
We're gonna do that here?
Yeah. And we have the room reserved, right?
No, but we can, yeah.
Can we reserve the room? Nine, nine to noon, or one o'clock maybe, something like that, on that day.
So I got a text from the police chief.
Yes.
He spoke with Eastern Alarm, says he can swap out one of the cameras on the front with one that could read a license plate at the front gate for an additional six hundred and sixty dollars. Wow, I know, right?
I know.
Well, might as well, I think you gotta do it, let's do it right.
I mean, if we're only six hundred and fifty away from being able to zoom, let's zoom.
I mean, he wouldn't follow through unless he thought it was, he would argue the case